First order of business is roll call.
Andy Baker.
Here.
Dave Huntune.
Here.
Owen Gambrell.
Here.
Jim Miller.
Here.
Eric Curtin.
Tom Heaney.
Here.
Second order of business is adoption of the minutes from our meeting on April 9th. Do I have a?
Motion to adopt said minutes from April 9th.
I'll second.
Made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. I'd like to welcome Mr. Huntune, our newest member tonight. He's an alternate, but he will be voting this evening. And our next order of business is the election of officers.
Nominate Jim Miller as chair.
I second.
Anyone for vice chair?
I'll nominate Owen.
I'll second. Secretary?
I nominate Eric Curtin for secretary.
I'll second that.
Anyone else want to participate? We have a slate. All those in favor of the current slate?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next, we're going to read through each hearing this evening and let the applicants state their intentions for this evening, whether they're going to go forward or whether there's an issue. So, Mr. Curtin, just read the petitioner and the address.
Petition of Atlantic Beach Suites LLC by their attorney, David Martland.
Read the address, please.
Oh, sorry. Down the bottom right here. Oh, so, sorry, forty-two, forty-four, and fifty-six, wave out.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Obviously, I'm not Mr. Martland, and he was unable to be here. And he later found out that his client was not going to be able to be here. So, I believe he conveyed that information to the zoning ordinance, zoning office, and would respectfully request an opportunity to either set a special hearing or just continue it to next month.
At this point, let's just continue it, right, Mr. Kane?
I would just continue it to the next regular hearing of May twenty-eighth.
We're going to continue that to May twenty-eighth.
May twenty-eighth? Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is James Callahan, Callahan and Callahan, three Brown Street, Wickford. I represent a group of neighbors, and I understand the contingency being granted. But just for the record, I'd like to place an objection due to the fact that I think we have at least sixteen people here for tonight's hearing. So, based on that factor, I understand Mr. Martland's unavailable and it's client. But for the record, I'd like to make that objection, and we will be in attendance the next meeting.
Noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The petition of Brian and Anna Donovan for variance. Said real estate is located on Tuckerman Avenue, further identified as lot one oh seven on tax assessor's plat one sixteen.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Crispian for the petitioners. We are going to ask that the board continue the petition. We discovered just prior to the meeting in consultation with Mr. Kane and the town solicitor that we are going to need to re-advertise that petition based on the changes the petitioners are making. So, we asked the board if they would continue it to the next meeting so we could get that re-advertising done.
We're going to continue that to the May twenty-eighth meeting, Mr. Bean.
Thank you, sir.
Petition of Atlantic Beach Suites LLC by their attorney, Sean Bouchard. Properties at twenty-eight Aquinic Ave.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Sean Bouchard, on behalf of the applicant. At this time, the entire floor plan is actually being redesigned, hopefully to better address some of the concerns that we've come across. And as a result, we're going to need to have to go back for technical review committee, development plan review, and then ultimately to the zoning board. And with that in mind, I would ask for a three-month continuance on this matter to the July hearing to allow us the opportunity to get through all the steps needed to get back before the board.
That'll be July twenty-third.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, you good with July twenty-third?
Yeah, that's perfect, thank you.
Sean, petition of SKN Associates LLC by their attorney, Sean Bouchard, property at fifteen Valley Road.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Sean Bouchard, on behalf of the applicant. This matter is going to be resolved at the planning board stage for development plan review. So, we're unable to go forward this evening, but we will be prepared for the May hearing.
We're going to continue that to the five twenty-eight meeting.
That would be perfect, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, for the record, there are two petitions.
Right.
Specials.
And that's for both of them.
The appeal of Lori Abrams by her attorney, Joseph Hook, the property. Excuse me?
That's right.
You're going to go forward tonight?
Yes, we expect to.
Okay, we're going to go through every one of them. We'll, so you'll be our first up when we?
Petition of Leon Pentaleos for variance. Properties located at five sixty Aquinic Avenue.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there are two petitions, one of variance, one of special use permit zone, one of the watershed district. The matter has not yet been heard by the planning board for an advisory opinion. So, that would need to get put over to five twenty-eight.
The petition of B&amp;L Hogan Associates by their attorney, Robert Silva. Properties located at sixty-five West Main Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is a petition for variance. We were prepared to go forward tonight, but there appears to be, as of very late last night, nearly today, a conflict with the solicitor being able to sit on the matter, a conflict with Dr. Hogan. And we were not able to reach the conflict solicitor to replace Peter this evening. So, under those circumstances, we would just ask that it be put over to next month.
To the five twenty-eight would be good? Okay, that'll be continued to five twenty-eight.
Thank you.
Petition of Owen and Jane Gambrell and Flat Waves LLC by Sean Bouchard. Properties located at eleven thirty-two Aquinic Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At this time, we still have to go before both the school committee and the town council on this matter. I would ask that it be continued to the May meeting for a status conference, if you will, to confirm if this will be moving forward or not.
We're going to continue that to the twenty-eighth of May.
Thank you very much.
Petition of fifty-eight Aquinic Ave LLC and Mission. Properties located at fifty-eight Aquinic Avenue.
We're ready to go forward on that one.
Okay.
And finally, the petition of Dennis and Christine Sullivan for variance. Properties at four Secana Terrace. You ready?
Okay.
Should I read those?
Yeah, we got to read the, read it in there.
The three are.
Yeah, go back to the appeal.
So, the three, we're going to hear the appeal of Lori Abrams by her attorney, Joseph F. Hook, for an appeal of the issuance of a fence permit dated January third, two thousand and nineteen, to Philip and Sandra Rondina, which authorizes the construction as of a six-foot, six-foot-tall wood fence using one-by-ten boards and posts of four-by-four within the property lines of plat one twenty-seven, one twenty-six, lot sixty. Said real estate is located at three seventy-nine, Third Beach Road, and further identified as lot sixty on tax assessor's plat one twenty-six.
Wait for Mr. Hook, let him.
Good evening, Joseph Hook for the appellant, Lori Abrams.
Robert Silva for Philip and Sandy Rondina, the individuals from, who are involved in the appeal of the fence permit. I'm here on their behalf.
Okay. So, with respect to my client's appeal, this is not a normal or typical case inasmuch as my client is the neighbor, that's typical, the neighbor of the Rondinas. And her property was derived or was the product of a subdivision that the Rondinas had approved a few years ago. And as a condition of that subdivision, there was, there needed to be zoning relief, specifically the street frontage requirements. The proposed new lot, which my client purchased from the Rondina, ultimately thereafter, purchased from the Rondinas, was proposed only to have fifteen feet of street frontage, whereas much more than that was required. And that fifteen-foot of street frontage that's proposed serves as the driveway and allows her to get in and out of the property. In making their application for the zoning subdivision, the Rondinas, through their counsel, represented as an inducement to get the zoning relief, that there would be no additional structures, and there'd be no visible changes to the property which the Rondinas were keeping. That would have been lot. Lot AP one twenty-six, lot sixty, whereas my client has lot sixty A. The Rondinas represented that we will not build any additional structures on that property. Now, structure in the term, in the zoning code is defined, and it's a term of art. And it includes a combination of materials to form a construction for use, occupancy, or ornamentation, whether installed on or at or above the surface of land or water. A fence is a structure within the meaning of that. Now, the fence that's being proposed is a stockade fence, a six-foot-tall stockade fence. And it meets the requirements of a fence, you're allowed to have a six-foot fence. But because my client only has fifteen feet of street frontage there, she is enclosed in and no longer has a view to the, to the road and to the, and part her sunset. But in addition, the proposed fence, it's proposed to be put right up on the boundary line, right up on that fifteen-foot driveway. And in fact, survey was done, the, the proposed fence goes into the driveway, and my client would have to ultimately move the driveway that was provided to her by the Rondinas. The legal argument is that, you know, when we come here as lawyers or as plaintiffs, and we make representations to you, you rely upon them. And the Rondinas should be stopped or not be permitted to do that because they represented to you. And the, the, the zoning decision, which is attached to my appeal, is recorded in the land evidence records, indicates that. So, I'd like to offer my client's testimony as to why some of the reasons that she doesn't want this, this fence.
Before we go into all that, did you, did you review the transcript of the zoning board? Because my, I sat on that board, so I don't have memory to go back. And I know what's in the, I read your, your filing, and I thought it was well done. But I'm inclined to ask that both you and opposing counsel write a brief and present it because to litigate this without looking at things like what's, what's in the record, I think leaves us at a, I think, you know, it's not going to serve well for your client or for.
I, I didn't, I don't have a copy of the transcript. I'd be happy to order that, and, but I attached the decision.
Right, and I had the decision, I read the decision. And I just think it would be a better use of, of time to just have briefs submitted that we can review because to litigate this in front of, you know, us, I don't think is going to serve us well without having those briefs. Mr. Silva? What do you, I mean, I'm looking for direction here. Mr. Regan?
I'll do whatever the board wants.
I think, you know, this, this really is, it's an interpretation of what the board's decision and whether or not this permit for the fence complies with that prior decision. So, I think having the, having the transcripts and then, you know, certainly asking the parties to submit a memo or a brief on the issue, I think is certainly within the board's discretion and probably a more efficient way of handling it.
Well, while I'm here, if I could take this opportunity, I remember distinctly what happened. Even the Rondinas don't recall because they were in Europe back in September of two thousand and fifteen. I presented a petition to this board, and I believe you're correct, Mr. Miller, you, you sat on that panel. And it was in, as a result of going before the planning board and asking that a lot, lot sixty, which had about thirty-six thousand square feet, and it had three buildings, three structures, two small cottages, and the main house where the Rondinas lived. And they wanted to subdivide that lot and combine it with its use for septic and water with another lot across Cudero Terrace that they owned called the barn, which had burned down, and they had rebuilt it. They wanted to have a common septic system, a common, common water system, and they wanted to subdivide the main lot sixty so that their personal dwelling and residence would be on a separate lot, and the two cottages would be on a new lot. It ended up where the house, the main house, ended up on a lot with about fifteen thousand nine hundred square feet, and the other lot, twenty thousand. That added up to the thirty-six. The planning board approved the subdivision but could not grant it except conditionally because there were zoning variances that had to take place. The houses that had been there for sixty years violated the gray yard setback, side yard setback, and lot coverage. To make matters worse, these units, these structures were in an R sixty zone, and there was never sixty thousand square feet in the original lot. It's only thirty-six thousand. So, it was a non-conforming situation. And section seven oh two of the ordinance says you can only have one dwelling unit, one structure, on a lot. Well, they already had three. So, we came before the planning board, the planning board granted us conditional approval. Then we appeared before the zoning board and asked for relief to make one lot into two, keep a second lot with two little units on it, and the other lot, the main house. In the decision, which was granted unanimously, nobody showed up to object, and I made offers of proof to the board because my clients weren't here. And the board listened, listened to what I had offered, listened to what the planning board had done, and the board unanimously granted the variance relief, not use relief, variance relief from dimensional setbacks. So, we ended up with two lots.
We're not here tonight to litigate the zoning ordinance. We're here to, we're here to hear an appeal of a, of a building permit. And so, I go back to my statement to opposing counsel is I think it's going to be a better use of our time to put these arguments into writing and document it. That way, we can take a look at the record and understand the spirit of how it was made because, you know, we, we have to look at it that way and make that decision.
And I agree with you that the transcript was necessary.
Because I don't want to have a discussion about what happened zoning-wise because that's not the question before us. What's before us right now is an appeal of the permit for the fence.
This is a very narrow issue, and I think the transcript will shed a lot of light. But I can tell you what you're going to find in the transcript because I incorporated it in, in the decision.
That's okay. I appreciate your, your, your knowledge, but, you know, we're at a disadvantage because we don't have it.
Okay.
And so, if you can.
I would ask that the appellant in this matter get the transcript, and I be able to obtain a copy of it at no expense.
I, I'm just saying what I'd like to see. I'm not going to, I'm not going to rule either way on that, so.
It's not my appeal.
Okay.
Mr. Hook should get the transcript.
Mr. Hook, are you okay writing a brief for us?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Because I just think, and then we can continue this matter till the five twenty-eight meeting? And then, as long as that gives you enough time to put the documentation together?
Well, I think one issue is when do you get the transcript, and how much time after that would you be able to have to write the brief?
I'll order it tomorrow, I'll come in tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
So, if there's no objection, we're going to continue this to five twenty-eight. It'll be at the top of the, top of the pile.
That's fine, thank you.
Do I need a motion for that, Mr. Regan?
Please. Motion to postpone this, push it up to five twenty-eight with the transcripts provided.
Motion made by Owen, second?
I second.
Tom Heaney, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is continued to five twenty-eight. And briefs, if you, as soon as you get the briefs, if you can submit them so we can review them because we want to, we want to do a good job. Thank you.
Just to clarify one thing, usually when you order briefs, the appellant, who is Mr. Hook, files his brief first, and then the other side has an opportunity to read the brief and reply.
I'm in uncharted territory, so I've got to, I've got to go to my opposing, to our solicitor for this.
I, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
I think so. Why don't we do it in a way that, well, we have to get the transcript, so we'll have to see how fast that gets done. But assuming that I have, have the transcript within a week or so, I mean, that would be pretty fast. But that my brief be due on the eighteenth of May, and Mr. Silva's be due on the twenty-seventh of May, unless you.
Yeah, that's, that's enough time for.
I'd like to suggest, because we don't know when the transcript will be available. When Joe gets the transcript, he has two weeks to write a brief.
Perfect.
When I get his, I have two weeks.
Okay.
And if that happens before the twenty-eighth, fine. If it doesn't, it'll be another month.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, do we continue to the twenty-eighth?
Right.
For control purposes and any event?
Yep, and for any event.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva, thank you, Mr. Hook. Next case?
Okay, the petition of fifty-eight Aquinic Ave LLC and Mission LLC by their attorney, Sean M. Bouchard, for a special use permit from section six oh two to permit a restaurant with a liquor license. Said real estate is located at fifty, fifty-eight Aquinic Avenue, further identified as lot eighteen oh two on tax assessor's plat one sixty.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Sean Bouchard, on behalf of the applicant of Mission LLC. The timing is perfect, my client just arrived. So, we're, we're here this evening in connection with a petition for a special use permit in connection with a liquor license for a restaurant use. The property in question is fifty-eight Aquinic Avenue. For those of you who are familiar, this is the location of the old subway that used to be in that facility. My client's Mission LLC, obviously, are operating Mission Burger in Newport and interested in opening a second location in Middletown. The property in question, they're entitled to operate a restaurant by right, they can do that. However, as people who might be familiar with Mission Burger understand, they also provide liquor sales with that restaurant use. And so, we're seeking to have the ability to have the same operation at this location. I'm joined this evening by Julia Hofer, who can, oh, who we got? Yeah, yeah, okay, I was going to say, geez, I'm thrown off. So, I am joined by Julia Hofer, who's a member of Mission LLC, who can kind of give some more detail as to the operation in Newport as well as what they're proposing for this location.
Okay, step forward.
Yeah, come on.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony tonight would be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name and address for the record.
Julia Hofer, Eighteen Finley Place, Newport, Rhode Island.
You can bend that down if you.
I think, I don't know.
Droll mics out, which ones?
Sorry. Julia Hofer, Eighteen Finley Place, Newport, Rhode Island.
Okay.
Hofer, H-O-F-F-E-R.
So, Julia, could you just do us a favor and run through kind of what the current operation is at Mission Burger and then what we're proposing at the current location?
Sure. Mission is in Newport, Rhode Island, off of Broadway. We've been open since two thousand and thirteen. It's a small spot, mainly to-go counter service restaurant. We want to do the same thing in Middletown. We do have a beer and wine license at the one in Newport. We sell probably a variety of like ten cans of beer, three cans of wine, no draft system or anything like that. It's not a bar, it's a restaurant for food that we have liquor, excuse me, we have beer and wine with. So, it's kind of an in-and-out and a quick, you know, burger and a beer and a go. So, the, the one in Middletown, we want to do the same thing, in-and-out, cater to the locals who don't want to come into Newport. We were going to do a variety of beers and a variety of wines, possibly two top liquor drinks. But that's the extent of it. There's no bar, per se, there's like a waiting area to hang at, and then the tables. So, that's what we're looking for to do.
Okay, and then in connection with the tables, so Anna Burnley had sent over a seating chart. Could you just, per the seating chart that was provided, we're indicating that there would be three tables with a total of twenty-two seats between the tables and the countertop, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we're allotted twenty-two or twenty-four. And for us, it's not a place we want people to really hang out. It's a small square footage, so we'd rather them come in, eat their burger, have their beer, and go. So, allowing only a certain amount of seats allows for people to realize people are standing and need to eat, so then they go. So, that's kind of our mind frame of it. So, yeah, three tables is what we, we mocked up here. And then there's room for kind of a place for to-go orders, or maybe like an armrest kind of a situation, where we have kind of that framed out over here where it looks like kind of rectangular, long, more kind of communal aspect. And then the, the counter is where you would do the ordering. So, you order your burger and your beer there, and then you sit, eat, and go back to day.
Can you?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this was part of the.
Yeah, we don't have that, so if you can make that exhibit A. Sorry, we're going to keep your drawing. We're going to mark it exhibit A, and it's a layout of the inside. How much parking do you currently have at, how much, Mr. Bouchard?
I think we have eight spots, right?
Yeah, so the, there are, I believe, fourteen total spots for the building. This unit is only allocated eight spots, which is why the seating is limited to the twenty-four seats. We're going to twenty-two to make sure that that's allowed. And that's based on prior zoning decisions that were passed. We are not asking for any relief related to parking. We are in compliance with the past approvals for the location, so there's no, there's no additional request needed for that.
And are we, are you asking for a beer and wine license or a full liquor license? I'm kind of confused.
So, it's a Class BV liquor license, and so that would be, at this time, it would be open to anything. But as was indicated, it's really, the intention is not to have an open bar, per se. It's really for beer and wine sales for the customers. So, if the board has an interest in trying to condition this to beer and wine only, we can certainly do so. There's no limited BV license in Middletown. It's a BV, and that's it, so that's all you got.
Yeah, our hope is to only be open till eleven. That's, you know, on the weekends, probably ten on the weekdays. But we don't, we have family and kids, we don't want to run a bar, so.
So, it'll be run very similar to Newport.
Yeah, it's, it's literally, we're taking that and putting it over in Middletown. So, it's a, it's a really easy concept to duplicate, so that's our plan.
Mr. Regan, if the, if the applicant is approved, can we put a attachment to the applicant that it just be beer and wine? We can?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then the only other question I had was, this will be open year-round, correct? This is not a seasonal business, or is this going to be?
No, it's not a seasonal business, it'll be open year-round.
Right, so this will be there to serve the whole community, not just the tourists during the summer months?
Yeah, no, we get a lot of the tourists in Newport. The whole plan to move to Middletown is because we want the locals, so we get over there so they don't have to come down to Broadway. I mean, we'll take tourists, too, we'll take whoever wants to give us the money. But, yeah, no, it's mainly for the locals.
I have no further questions.
Any other questions for the other?
If we seat our subway right now, it seems like this will be the same amount of seats. Correct, we're staying within the same number.
Yeah, I think there was before that. Yeah, I think there was before that, about 22.
Originally, the Subway had, they had 24 seats, they came to get a variance for parking when the Empire Coffee business moved into the same location, but Subway had by right a capacity of 24, and I don't believe that they're asking to go beyond that.
All right, and then I will say, although the owner is not here, I had spoken with the owner, when it came to leasing out this space, the intention when they first put in the Subway and the Empire was that they wanted to try and have a breakfast operation, then more of an afternoon-evening operation, that was kind of their intention, to try and keep that, you know, lunch-to-dinner option available at the Subway location, that's why we've come forward, you know, this is not going to be a breakfast-type business, that way, you know, when Custom House is busy, Custom is going to be, or sorry, Empire is going to be the one being used, and then we'll be kind of taking over as the day progresses. So it's, it's an attempt to try and keep the parking consistent with what's kind of been experienced at that location for many years now.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one quick one. Is there any policy that limits the amount of beers that are served to an individual patron at any one sitting, so to speak, no more than two beers per sitting? I understand the goal is to get people in and out, to increase the traffic, and it's not set up as a bar, but in order to, in any way, minimize the, it's a slow day, I'm coming off the beach, I'm just going to sit down, you guys aren't busy, and I'll have six or eight pops, and turn it into something that you, I think you're kind of...
Yeah, you mean our policy?
Right, is there anything like that in place, or...
I mean, with our current operation, if the, you know, the employee has to be aware of it, they're all certified, so, you know, if they think that someone doesn't need to have another beer, then they'll certainly have the, we give them the authority to say no. But it, we have kind of built a reputation that we're not a bar.
Right.
And so we are hoping to just duplicate that over in Middletown. And yeah, I mean, if someone wants to have a couple beers, then we welcome that, if they want to sit back and rest, you know, we're not going to rush them out.
Right.
But, but yeah, our employees will be trained to know what to do. They have to be tip-certified, even if they're not bartenders.
Right.
Serving, you know, beer and wine, they have to be legally.
Yeah, and that's a requirement of the liquor license application, is that all employees are tip-certified? I have no further presentation this time, happy to answer any other questions you might have.
I'll open it up to the public. Is there any in the audience that would like to either speak for or against the petition? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Motion to grant the petition with the attachment that it be just the beer and wine only.
I'll second the motion. Discussion?
I'm going to grant, vote in favor of the petition, it's minimum requirements, they do have the parking facilities, and there has been no issues with just the beer and the wine. I don't see any reason why we can't accommodate.
I'm also going to vote in favor of it, I don't see that the traffic is any greater for Mission Burger than it would be for Subway and Empire.
I also agree, I think it'll, obviously, the space is already there, so putting another viable business in here is good, not only for the area, but for the community, so I'm going to support it also.
I'm also going to support the petition, I think it, it matches all three of the doctrines that we have to look at, which is the overlay, which they just started, the Atlantic Beach District, as well as our complaint, I think it's a great, a great use of the space, and a great use of a limited business, though, so I too am going to support it. Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Good luck.
The petition of Dennis and Christine Sullivan for variance from Section 603 and 701, to allow the construction of a 40-by-24 two-story garage addition with a front yard setback of 34 feet, where 40 feet is required, and a west side setback of 27 and 1/2 feet, where 30 feet is required. Said real estate is located at 4 Secana Terrace, and further identified as Lot 10.6 on Tax Assessor Plot 129.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear the test, do you swear the testimony night would be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Dennis Sullivan, 4 Secana Terrace, Middletown, Rhode Island.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Tell us about your petition.
We're moving back in, to the, to our house in Middletown, and we have a, the house was built in 1962, and we're going to be renovating the house. We're taking down the garage that's there, and, which fits about one and a half cars, so we're making it a full two-car garage and putting a master bedroom up over, over the top. And in doing that, we came six feet further, closer to the Secana Terrace, which required a 40-foot setback, and we came up to 34, it tapers back, it goes from six feet to zero, but...
And you're, you're on a corner lot, too, right?
Yes. And on the, on our neighbor's side, there's a 30-foot requirement, and we're 20, we're two and a half feet closer than that, 27 and 1/2. And to, the reason it's moved up a little is because to put the full two-car garage in with the, with the room above, it cuts back into the existing kitchen, and we didn't want to do anything with the original house, we wanted to maintain the integrity of the original house. We're taking down the old garage, and there was a breezeway in between, and putting a full two-car garage with the, with the room above.
So you're only, you're here for two-dimensional variances?
Yes. Yes.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Rondou, Mr. Bacon?
None.
Just to be clear, Mr. Sullivan, you're coming forward, or that is towards the road, just so you didn't have to cut into the existing house where there's a kitchen?
Correct.
Or it is. So you're pretty much forced to either come forward, or to, forward which is south, I guess, and to the west, because of...
Correct. We're coming forward, if it stayed back that six feet, then it, it cuts into the, that's where the kitchen is, with the windows, and it cuts that out, so we're moving it the six feet forward.
Okay. Okay. I'll see if anyone wants to object. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against the petition? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to prove the variance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Mr. President, I'm in favor of supporting this, you already talked to the unique characteristics of this lot, it's a corner lot, so because of that, it makes it difficult to go in any direction without getting close, if not in violation of your footprint. I think that the relief that they're asking for is really minimal, which obviously is shown on the map, it's two and a half feet in one direction, six in the other, and because of those things, and the fact that it won't alter really the surrounding area, when you look at those lots, very nice houses, very big lots, I don't think this is going to encroach only in the neighbors, so for all those reasons, I'm going to support this.
Any other discussion? I agree with my colleague, the, the unique characteristic of a corner lot requires you to have two front yard setbacks, which at least you can honor most of it, and that's not even taken into account the fact that you have more space before the road that's home by the town, but it still gives you plenty of room, so I too am going to support it, I think it's the minimum relief required to put the garage on. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second.